Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation under this law.
Roll call please.
Trustee Polly. Trustee Lappin. Clerk Palavich here.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Crow.
Here.
Trustee Reiner. Supervisor Skibby.
Here.
Moving forward to the adoption of the agenda, are there any corrections, substitutions, or additions to the agenda as presented? If not, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Have a motion and support for their discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting the agenda signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. The agenda has been adopted. This is the first opportunity for public comment, the first opportunity for public comment is to discuss anything that is on the agenda. But there will disappoint in clarification, public comment will be actually had if you're here in regards to the North Point Shore Special Assessment, once that public hearing opens, there will be adequate time to have public comment in that forum. With that being stated, is there anybody online that has public comment to the agenda as presented? Again, this is the opportunity for public comment as to the agenda before us. There's any public comment? There's none online, is there any impetus to the agenda as presented? Seeing none, we'll move forward into the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be called, discussed further in the consent agenda? Or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion?
I trust you.
Yes, yes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner. Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward on to old business at this point in time, the first item of old business is the North Point Shore's Special Assessment Public Hearing and Resolutions. At this point in time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing in regards to the special assessment.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the board and support by trustee Polly. Further discussion? Seeing none.
Is this a roll call?
Roll call. All those in favor of opening the public hearing in regards to the North Point Shore Special Assessment signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. The public hearing is now open for the North Point Shore Special Assessment. If you stand at the podium to give comment, please limit yourself to three minutes, we will need your names spoken clearly and addresses so that we can define by minutes your position in regards to this special assessment. Yeah. Yes, if you'd like. So. So, and our legal counsel Golden can actually bring some of us abreast.
Just tonight's hearing on the necessity of the project in order to inform the board whether to proceed further with the Special Assessment District. The applicable statute states that the township board may proceed to carry out an improvement as provided in this act unless written objections to the improvement are filed with the township board at or before the hearing, tonight's hearing. And then the statute provides that if there are objections from record owners of land constituting more than 20% of the total frontage upon the road, that halts the project and then the township board wouldn't be able to proceed unless they received a petition from the record owners of land constituting more than 50% of the total frontage upon the road. So the 20% issue is relevant for tonight.
Because at this point in time, I do believe that we've recorded 20.6% people opposed to the special assessment. But if there are public comments, help us understand because we did receive a plethora of letters in regards to this.
I have a question to Tim first. So since we have received 20.6 against, in opposition of this, does that stop? So the board cannot move further at this time?
Correct.
That's correct.
We can hold a public hearing, we'll still hold a public hearing.
Alright, but I just wanted to make sure I understood.
To help clarify some of the issues. I'm Brian Hannah, 8428 North Point Shores. Lived in North Point Shores for 28 years. So North Point Shores is a private road association and private road over three miles in length. Maintained by our residents, the special assessment has been agreed upon by our members to be shared on a per lot basis for road maintenance improvements for over 30 years. We ourselves privately even have to completely take care of the first 1.2 miles of road before even the first house is reached. Every fall, we get together for neighborhood social gathering and potluck as well as a formal meeting with the road members and the elected private road board for a yearly review. Every five years or so, we have always agreed to increase our yearly fees as needed, just like we did last October 2022, which was formalized with the February petition signed 48 to 8. Township, as far as I know, has never spent a cent helping us maintain our over three miles of road. Nor have we asked for it. For some unknown reason, you Nathan Skibby personally tried to intimidate our elected private North Point Road Board by refusing our neighborly and privately decided and democratically voted and agreed upon and legitimate February routine petition, routine that we've signed every five years for 30 years, and stated you personally wanted it changed to a per foot basis instead of per lot. You apparently bullied our private North Point Road Board to hurriedly and under a short timeline to quickly run up and down our road over a weekend to collect new signatures in order for you to consider the new special assessment in time to collect the increase in fees this year. The new per foot wording was never discussed or considered or explained in any road meeting or writing or formal setting to any of the road members. When a harried board member showed up at our door explaining Nathan Skibby's request for a sudden change, Belinda and I were told the new petition represented only minor word change and would not really affect us at all. Linda was pressured into signing immediately as time was critical, but she declined to sign right away and when we read the fine print realized we would be paying $2,700 a year instead of $800 a year. So to me, that's not minor word change. There are several other residents on the corners or the curves where the road frontage is significantly more than the beach frontage on these lots. And so they'd be also similar effect that several of them are here tonight. I can certainly get enough people on our road to declare the second petition in April invalid due to enough residents stating the minor word change requested by the township was misrepresented to them and coerced and frankly, all the words strong deceitful in the way in which these signatures were obtained. So there is no sense going forward with the second per foot signed special assessment petition hurriedly gathered in April as it will be fairly easy to get this legally declared invalid. This is a whole lot of stress and consternation for our hardworking board members and our neighborhood for nothing, why? Why? Why is this even a problem? This shouldn't even be here, none of us should be here tonight, not one of us, this is so easy.
So that was your three minutes.
Okay, I just finished my little.
Yeah, I'll let you finish because I would like to have an opportunity to have a rebuttal.
Yeah, sure. There is no reason to change the way our private and neighborly neighborhood has gone about their business for over 30 years. We residents have our legitimate differences about road maintenance priorities and how we should spend our money, but these more specific issues are between the road residents and our private road association, not the township. We as road, as a road, just request you to honor the legitimate and legally signed February per lot agreement as we have always done. And this process, this routine 30-year plus historical per lot special assessment so we can continue to take care of our road privately as we always have agreed to without township financial assistance, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hannah. To your statements that this was coerced or bullied. I never knew that following Public Act 188, 139, and following it to the letter of the law would be conceived as being bullied. The timeline was truncated, yes, I agree with that. That was actually the starting point of your association, not driven by the township. But yeah, so as to your, your principal point of bullying. And your comments have been registered as it has your letter.
Do you want to get into the statute?
Yeah, I mean, this is the literal statute, if you want to have your lawyer who may be listening. 247.392 allocation of costs and notice of public hearings, section two, upon receiving a petition, the township board of any township may enter into a contract or make any maintenance or improvement with allocation of cost to be spread against all the owners and the special assessment, assessment district benefiting on a pro rata frontage basis or against each owner equally in the special assessment district benefiting. The maintenance or improvement and the assessment of cost must not be completed until the township board has created the special assessment district and assessed the properties with the proper notice of public hearings of all owners of property within the special assessment district to be benefited. So getting to that point of per lot, that is not a legal standard, we actually send taxes to parcels, not to lots. So this is one yet again, another function of unclarity and dysfunction of the past. When we started digging into this, sir, we even found out that the frontage was not based upon the road frontage itself, but that of late frontage. That unto itself doesn't follow the public act. So we did our best with the three different methodologies of collections that we saw going through this paperwork that was presented from, I believe, your February signing. And that eradicated the fact that I would sign an illegal document in terms of unfair cost allocation. We tried to find one of two legal methodologies for special assessment districts and the cleanest one for it, which there are some outliers, there are people that had a big swing, you are principally one as, as a landowner. But it is a legal standing by the public act that we operate under. So is there other comments, sir?
My name is Dan McNeil, I live at 7398 North Point Shores. I'm like the eighth house in when the houses begin and good evening and thank you. I've read all of the emails, I've read all of the communications regarding this and the biggest point of contention is, it appears to me to be our petition, which the township redrafted, our petition said $6 per lineal road frontage with a cap of $600 per lot, if you will. So I have 100 foot of frontage, I'm at 600. I heard from this gentleman over here who's got 1,200 or more foot of frontage. And if there is no cap, he's not paying 1,200, he's paying 25 and some change. So clarify, the township's special assessment petition or whatever it is does not have a cap. Is that correct?
So the way that it was drafted after it went through assessing and through legal was $6 a linear foot?
Correct.
That was.
With no cap. That's what I want to hear, cap or no cap?
And I don't have, I, right now, I don't have it right in front of me. It was my understanding that it was just based upon per linear foot because we have some calculations that are calculated out to the full distance.
So whatever your winner, linear road frontage footage is, you're paying $6 per foot with no cap. I, I, I mean, you need to answer that question because that's the issue here tonight.
Well, it's one of many, I do believe. And I don't think all of them started at this table or with me personally.
No, I'm not, I'm not disparaging you in any way.
The board would like to do is find a way for it. This all really came together quite quick. Obviously, the last sequence was a two-year special assessment. And then we had a meeting with, I think, the majority of the HOA or whatever the board is. And that's really the biggest defining difference is why can't we continue to do it the way that it was done based on lots? It's not based on lots, it is based on parcels. So and to, to your question, sir, I believe that with the economics that were strung out.
I don't think it's a cap, it just.
This is $6 per foot, so in by the, the district language, it is not capped, it'd be at $6.
Alright, okay, well, that's important for the property owners to understand and know
Yeah.
to render their vote, if you will. Here's my question and it's always been, and I don't know the answer to this. It is a private road, we get that. And I don't know, and maybe
Well, Golden.
Can answer this, I couldn't see your name. Can the township take, say, take over this road? I know it's a dead end road and there's like 90.
I'm gonna jump in, town, townships don't have roads any longer, they don't, county road.
So this would be the county road commission. So I, my question then would go to the county road commission and that is, listen, seal coat this road or tar it or do something and the maintenance, the snow removal, the upkeep would and of course assess us. And maybe I'm talking to the wrong crowd here, but in the long run, in the long run, two things. It would be easier to maintain and secondly, it would increase our property values, which would increase your taxes
So.
that we pay.
It is a different venue. And so this was already discussed with the members of the board. And I can say without undue clarification, I would implore you to reach out to Ryan Barkey, the acting manager. They are not in the, either in the business of taking on private roads. So it's that conundrum, we're trying to find a clean legal way of continuing the, the, the special assessment district.
Okay.
That is a legal standard.
So our association then would go to the county road commission or the county commission, county board of commissioners to.
Road commission.
Road commission to present this idea. Alright.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you, sir.
I'm Belinda Hannah, 8428 North Point Shores. The North Point Shores Road Maintenance Program has not been free of discord over the years. However, people have generally agreed that the method of assessment has been equitable. In fact, our special assessment district was conceived to create a road maintenance program that was as equitable as possible. The new assessment method proposed by the township is less equitable than our longstanding road association agreements. And I think that this Michigan Act 188 is focused on making it equitable and on the benefit each person receives. And I think that there's ways to do it that are equitable that don't have to be on a per foot basis. And, and I think there's legal basis to have it be not on per foot basis. So I think that the wording does not have to insist that it has to be per linear foot. It can be arranged and so everyone for years has agreed upon this, this assessment method. So I'm just reiterating, if we, if this goes through, our road maintenance cost is going to be equal to 80% of our annual township fees. And so that means that 44% of what we pay the Alpine Township for our annual township tax bill is going to be going toward road maintenance. So it's just a huge, it's just a huge jump for just a few of us on the curves. And so again, the property value of our home is, a lot of it is based on the lake shore rather than road frontage and now we're being adversely affected by this kind of convoluted way of assessing it. So we'd like the per cap, per lot, a cap and this change to disproportionately affect the few who live on curves has no reasonable basis and could be corrected by capping, you know, cost of 600 per year.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Tim, I just want to clarify that we cannot do a, if I'm wrong, correct me, if I want to make sure I'm understanding things correctly. The township cannot do a special assessment per lot, we only can do special assessments per parcel. So we don't know if a parcel is three lots, one and a half lots, two lots, because we only look at parcels.
It'll come back to the, the statute that authorizes special assessments for private roads, Act 139. You've got two choices. On a pro rata frontage basis or against each owner equally in the special assessment district.
So currently there's 79 parcels. So the options are either to do it on a per linear foot of road frontage, it has to be road frontage. Or to take the total amount wanted, needed and divide that by 79 parcels and each parcel owner would pay the same. Those are the two options for this statute.
For this statute.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understand.
Maybe I'm in, I've got the statute in front of me here and I just.
Starts with 139.
Well, it's section two of, of 247.392, what you read earlier.
Yep.
But I don't read it that way, I read it as saying that spreading allocation of cost to be spread against all of the owners in the special assessment district benefiting on a pro rata frontage basis. And we're interpreting that to be road frontage or against each owner equally in the special assessment district benefited. So if an owner has two or three lots, they only get, I mean, that's an alternative in the statute.
We go by.
It doesn't say parcels, it says owners.
Yeah. So that's why, you know, what has been presented, obviously, we have 20% and it's defeated. So now the position of the township would be to, to throw this back because there is another methodology. And it's, I directed back to you, what is, what is your total amount that you want to collect as, as an entire special assessment district? And then utilize, divide it by 79 and is that valid? We had such a short timeline and with three different methodologies, there was no bullying, we're doing everything that we could to make sure that this had the greatest amount of success to be applied to the summer tax bill. Now with this, if there is success as to equal division among the 79 parcel owners, then that would be applied to the quickest that that could turn around would be for this December tax bill.
I have another question.
Yes.
Tim, I, of course, haven't had the opportunity to search the history, but I see this statute was amended effective June of last year, 2022. If that being, that being the case, do we know whether or not the historical statute prior to June of 14th to 2022 had different language?
I don't know, Russ.
We'd have to look into that.
So where this.
I mean, that might, was the only thing that would do, it wouldn't change where we're at right now, it would just, all that would do is explain why it had been done differently in the past.
We may have, I believe I know the case that resulted in the amendment though, and that was an owner had a, a very large amount of frontage. And he and his neighbors agreed it's going to be per owner. And the per owner wasn't in there before. And so.
That did get it.
Went to Stamos, Samos, famous and successfully worked its way through over a several year process and I was keeping an eye on it in the MTA news. And so they wonder how this popped up.
I believe that Mr. Zarnecki was kind of diswaiting and we so rudely interrupted with Mr. Zarnecki. Owner versus parcel?
Owner versus what?
He didn't want to.
Sounds like, sounds like there needs to be clarification.
So, so there are two options. There again, what was presented under this special assessment district, which was honestly, at that point, the cleanest way to get it to the July tax bill was by linear foot. So the other option is amongst this group would be to determine what is the total amount of encapsulated cost that you want to generate by this district and divided by 79 and then the process starts over.
Ethan, can you explain, it might help folks. Previous special assessment districts for this, for this private road. They were done besides the waterfront versus the road frontage issue, but so they didn't. They used a different method in the.
So where this. So where this originally started was the difference between subdivided lots and lots and meets and bounds, of which north and port, North Point Shores has both. The, the district itself started in the middle half, so 25% in the beginning part is actually meets and bounds and at the very end of North Point Shores is back to meets and bounds. So now unfortunately, what happened is, as time passed, was that expanded to include the meets and bounds parcels and concurrently as time progressed, owners of one lot may have bought a second and combined or not combined, we had one where there was still three different parcels with one owner. So we had all kinds of methodologies, we had by what was linear foot. That was the cleanest one because when you add 100 linear foot, you could see that historical reference point. We had fly on the wall, thrown a dart at with absolutely no methodology for collection. Historically, it was my understanding that Lafarge Holson was never to be part of this district, which is also another point that an attorney had made in a letter, we're asking questions, was the unit benefit is to the road and roads have two sides. That historically was always designed as a districts have that flexibility to craft it in however, the district and its residents want it to be crafted. So that only included late frontage parcels. And so we found out that Lafarge Holson was paying at that point in time a number that we couldn't figure out which methodology that they were being divided upon for their original parcels on the south side of, he wrote. And it was purely a mess and the more pages we dug into it and having our assessor pull out values, we found out then that the frontage as state law and public acts demand is on road frontage. Well, the frontage that we had listed on this special assessment was late frontage. Not equal. Obviously, a paradigm shift with some individuals that had not a very big amount of late frontage versus, well, there's a curved linear road and they have more frontage. So we had three different methodologies of cost allocation. And so with the truncated timeline and with what was already worked on and formulated, the best approach was what was before us, so.
I was like to speak to that myself, Ed Zarnecki, 7,500 North Point Shores. So there's many neighbors on the south side of the road. Maybe 80 property owners' lots, meets and bounds, part of the subdivision, we're all neighbors, we share the south side. And if you're going to use road frontage, there's another neighbor that you're forgetting on the north side of that road, Lafarge. Road frontage on their side of the road is on the north side, just as we have road frontage, if you're going to use that formula. And by simple math, they've got three and a half miles. I'm coming up with 18,480 feet, kind of six. There's also another neighbor that's got a half a mile on the south side of the road as soon as you enter the road from Missouri Bay and that's a half a mile, which comes out to 2,640 linear road feet, road feet, so don't forget the neighbor to.
I, I, we won't forget that neighbor, Mr. Zarnecki, but what we all need to remember is. I I we won't forget that neighbor, Mr. Zarnecki, but what we all need to remember is. This special assessment was initiated by North Point Shores. And so where it's historic and I'm not adding any onus or responsibility therein. It's, that is how the definition in that district was designed, not to include wholesome, because actually, if you look at that methodology by linear foot. Then it would be pretty easy for wholesome to say with one vote that this is now a dead issue because they do have that much linear frontage. So I don't know if that was the thought process and the methodologies. Decades ago when this was brought into existence.
The new statute that you quoted though talked about benefiting those that. Have road frontage and folks that are benefited. So when we put gravel on the road and we plow snow on the road, we put dust control on the road. We don't just hit the south path from the center line to the south, we hit the Lafarge side, again eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty feet.
Well, they do pay, they actually were registered by linear frontage to pay an actual fair share as comparative to in the past, they're paying a number that we didn't know how it was actually computed.
On their lots.
To their parcels?
Yes.
Yes, because there is, language is pretty paramount in that.
I'm talking about the north side that they own the whole three and a half.
Yeah, and then maybe that's why historically, if you want to redefine the district, you can open the floodgates. We weren't trying to open up every floodgate, we were actually trying to find a legal standard. That's as simple as it was. It 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 may be in, we we have differences of opinions in that regard and and legal opinions vary as well, but potentially. But as this public act is presented under one thirty nine and then one eighty eight. If you would like to have a conversation about expanding that district to encompass the original uh. Linear frontage of those property owners and to include Lafarge wholesome, that would be your directive to include them. But the, I think the bitter pill of that potential of inclusion is the fact that now you have one entity that can fill this entire special assessment district. Because they have the frontage. I don't know how it was originally drafted. I would make that assumption. Because then you would have one entity that has the ability to kill it. Yeah.
And I mean, when you and I spoke on the phone too, I mean, and you're saying, you know, four hundred dollars is what everybody paid. And I said, well, there's some in here for eight hundred, some for twelve hundred, some for twenty four hundred. So it's like, how those formulas came to be is part of the question of how this all came up.
Right, we've paid our bills historically, right? We've collected the money that we budgeted on our own without any guidance. From you, you collected the money, you held it, you dispersed it to the folks that we needed it dispersed to. That was your part of it.
Yeah, a- and part of it is also signing a legal document that it's legal and accurate. And I, what was originally brought forward, did not meet that standard, Mr. Zarnecki.
So if I understand correctly. The language in this first set of petitions did not match the methods that was. Used to determine how much everyone paid. That's what started the issue.
That's.
Getting the language to match.
And then going back through taxable, every taxable parcel, finding what they paid. And matching it then to the linear frontage and trying to make as much sense out of the methodologies as possible. And it got to a point where there was no rhyme or reason to some of it. And so we needed to clean it up and present something that's of legal standard and there are two options. Now, this is obviously uh what is presented uh is kind of dead on arrival, but that doesn't mean that. As a district, you could actually be, because some of the letters weren't just economic driven, I think there's a lot of communication gaps. But what is your, the intent is to maintain and improve a road. Uh, I don't know if your intent is to pave it and pay engineering. Because one thirty nine is very succinct into its methodologies and utilization of funds. Um, for maintenance and repairs. So I, therein, we we look to you as a district and say, what is your goal? How much would you like to calculate? If you want to have as as equitable as a process? Then what does that look like in terms of the seventy nine parcel owners that comprise the existing district? To your point, sir, you want to expand the district and say we want to have Lafarge uh have that ability to be part of the district because they're on the other side of the road? They would probably potentially have the legal standard to go to tax tribunal and say, why would we improve that road when? A hundred feet uh to the north, we have our own private drive. I I don't know their standard or what their position would be. But I know one thing, given the fact that by linear frontage or by percentage of ownership. They could kill this special assessment district any which way but loose. So I don't know if that's why it's originally drafted dis for the lake frontage people. To that, I wa- I wasn't around. No, I appreciate you, Mr. Zarnecki.
I have a question.
Yes.
So under the premise or under the idea of. Looking at the the. First, we have to establish, as I understand this. The the fifty seven thousand seven hundred and thirty three dollars and sixty eight cents is the, is the. Determined cost by way of linear footage? Is is that how you arrived at that number? All right. So what?
Well, well, that's the overall estimate. Grading, snowpawing, uh, all the improvements, and I believe there were engineering costs.
Who who came up with that number?
That uh normally you're relying on, if it's a normal road project, road construction project, you'd rely on RS Scott or somebody like that. In this case. They deal with it year in and year out, so I believe the committee.
Estimates and stuff that they have given.
They 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 get estimates from the Ariaki, you know.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so so the burden is on them to establish their costs and then figure out this equitable way. Of dispersing it out and and ultimately putting it into a resolution.
And also care has to be taken that this special assessment district is snowpawing, grading. I don't know, I'm missing some other things probably, but uh.
Just generally.
Yeah, it's normal removal, grading and maintenance. By definition, it's not including end costs to determine whether it should be paved someday or or.
There's no capital improvement.
Well, that was going to be a part of my question, was there some renewed, but notwithstanding any of that, I don't quite go in that deep yet. So, so whether. Whether it's sixty thousand dollars or whatever the number is, if if the, if the north shore group. Wants to use the other methodology of of dividing by seventy nine or eighty or i- if they wanted to bring in uh Lafarge into it or whomever else. That's their prerogative, right? So then they could, they could go to all of the property owners and and they could establish what their current costs are anticipated. And what their future costs are anticipated. Divided by the number of property owners and be done with it. That's an option, right?
Part of that equation is also to determining how much interest is there, how much support are we going to have?
So that they have to at least achieve the fifty percent, right? And so, and so it sounds to me as though under normal conditions, you've easily accept uh surpassed the 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 fifty percent mark, right? And so why not, since this is going to die tonight? Why not? Think outside the box a little bit and and if and if you guys feel that the person was a hundred feet versus the person has a thousand feet is just going to be a mathematical. Division of of the total costs and if that's fair to tho- those field people, well, why does it matter to us? So in other words, if if one person is a lot more li- uh linear footage than someone else, and if everybody's agreed upon said dollar.
That would be the second option.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So if 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 they feel it's fair, who are we to say it's not?
You likely would say it's fine and proceed with the the resolution.
Because that's sort of sounds, that's that's the direction it sounds like it's going.
My name is John Briggs and back in eighty one, I signed a land contract with Gary Partika. To buy a hundred foot lot out there and after ten years I've owned it and uh. We've, we planned to retire out there, my first wife and I, and she was deceased. We camped out there, we loved it all the time. So after that, I said, I'm not going to wait to retire, thank God. We, when I remarried, we decided to build out there and so we have a beautiful home out there, eighty six ten North Point Shores Road. And we've always had this good relationship and I think. I'm looking at a solution to this thing. I've never been on the road committee. God, I would never want to be on the road committee that we have or our board because it's a challenge. But I think what would be fair is to realize what everybody who has a parcel out there is paying for access. To the property. For the three miles so that. Even the mile and a half that nobody lives on, even at the end where they need room to turn around all the trucks that are pulling bulldozers and stuff like that because they can't do it anywhere else. But I think that every, every parcel owner should be treated the same. I mean, that, you know, my personal belief is that we ought to, if we're going to use six hundred or we need seven hundred, whatever it takes, we assess that to each of those seventy nine parcels. And do it that way, not worry about the lender footage because I don't know how many have driven North Point Shores Road, but. There's a lot of twists and turns and there's some people with some pretty small property on the water. And big on the lot, on the road and vice versa. And I'm one of the lucky ones, I have a hundred feet on and Texas, I guess a hundred and ten feet according to Wayne Lewis on the, on the water. But I think what we need to do is just agree on them out, I mean. We put for six hundred dollars, what, a parcel to begin with? Was that the first petition, something like that?
That was the increase from four hundred to six hundred.
Yes, right. See, if we went with that. And we live with that, I know we're talking five year. And we, and we need to come back in a couple of years because we realize we're we're not getting as much money as we want, but I think we're going to have better peace when the person who has two parcels or three parcels. Is going to be treated equitably out there as a person does one parcel because all they worry about is access. The road being good enough shape so people can get in and out year round, getting it plowed, getting dust. And also, if we have a little bit of resources, we've been doing a little bit of work to survey to see what needs to be done if we ever go to another, another level. And whether we have to put a culvert in to make sure that DNR and DEQ are happy, think folks like that, so. My feeling is that we should treat each parcel the same in term of a cost, whether that number is and if if six hundred won't do it. I won't do it, will I?
About seventy nine properties.
All right, will that make it?
Fifty seven based on ninety five.
Parcels, Joey. That's your new nickname, it's Joey Lots.
But we're talking about.
Seventy nine.
My, my feeling is, and as we have to go back and re-sign something for a bigger amount of money, my feeling is.
These would be your questions, sir. If that's, and I think that is the majority of the will is to look at a different methodology. So then what is the rate that you want to collect? What are your goals? Because also I would like you to inform, even with the language that's in here. It does not include any other costs that are outside the scope of maintenance, snow removal, et cetera, forty seven.
Fifty seven thousand divided by seventy nine would be seven hundred and twenty one dollars.
Yeah, so by by reverse math, if you're looking at instead of the six hundred dollars per parcel. It would be seven hundred and twenty one dollars and fifty two cents per parcel to attain the same level of funding. That was exhibited in this special assessment district.
Wait, we've got a difference between seventy nine and ninety five, right? Do you use seventy nine?
Seventy nine is the reality.
Seventy nine parcel.
We're not, we're not going by seven, ninety five lots and and combinations.
But that's your interpretation of 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 the statute where where it says owners, right?
And we we define owners as parcels.
Is that a fair interpretation?
I've been relying on Alan Berg, that's who brought this up originally and then Dan Florip, who's been working with Alan.
Well, that's my question is, is, is the thing about, or owners interpreted to be. Parcels, in other words, if an owner owns three parcels and they're, because the. Truth is, if they're contiguous parcels, they could join them all into one parcel.
But not always. Versus subdivided plots.
Whether you, whether whether you call it a parcel or whether you call it a lot owner or whether you call it an owner. If they need X dollars, they simply divide it by that number.
That number, right.
Instead of seventy nine, it might be sixty or it might be twenty, it might be five.
But I'm talking about the statute that we.
I understand, I understand, but but if we're living up to the merit, if 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 they're living up to the the intent of the statute. By owner. And if they need X dollars, it's going to be divided by the number of owners, so the net result is the same.
And I think a point needs to be made, probably obvious to everyone, but is our only role in this. Is to do it legally and to and to be the vehicle through which they can assess it on taxes as opposed to doing it themselves. Because they could do it themselves by any method they want, have a homeowner's association.
That, that's my point, and I think that's exactly what.
Mr. Riggs at the podium.
Well, but I mean, my 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 feeling is, I I I think this problem could allows an opportunity for us within the property owners association is to treat. Each person who needs to have access to the road the same, whether they have a hundred feet or two hundred feet or three hundred feet on their parcel. And now if they've got parcels that are a different location, that's two different identified things. Or if you got property like, you know, Hannah, you have, you have two separate parcels and mailbox and some stuff like that, so you've got, you got two. Two parcels there, I I'm guessing. You know, that that that's not a big question on that where you can clearly identify that, but I think. It helped us in terms of relationship that someone's not going to complain because they're paying twice as much because they happen to have been able to buy a lot next door some years ago when it was available. Because I've been looking, I was looking that we have access to, everybody has access to this road that we're gradually trying to to bring up to a better standard. I mean, I'd be happy, I took a dr- drive down South Park, East Point Road just to see, you know. If our road was as good as that, and I realized what the town, township has nothing to do with that now, right? That's the the county.
So the county road commission, the township's gifted, that's the the creation of road commissions. Um, that all the townships donated all the roads to the road commissions henceforth, now we have county road. Um, and really the only influence and connectivity that we have with the road commission is a funding potential mechanism uh for secondary roads. On the systems in which they maintain. So. We don't have really any direct affiliation other than trying to allocate as much money as we can in our general fund to improve the roads.
You want to go wire over that, that would help, but certainly.
But to Mr. Reiner's point, a lot of people have not made their properties in the parcel. And it's going to be a rash of people putting their lots together as parcels unless they go across. In the subdivision and association or across the section line and they can't do that, that won't be fair then.
Well, and and the other point is, there's a lot of reasons not to do that because then you don't, you only have one sale, little piece of properties.
Well, before we, I mean, if you have a position, Joe, the the podium's there, I mean, we want to make sure that the minutes are well reflected of 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 the petition. And what your positions are as residents in that district. We had, to begin with, we had an extremely short timeline. The more we dug into it, the more problems that were inherent. We tried to find the cleanest and most legal methodology moving forward. And that's what we brought forward because of, I have, without having to completely recreate the wheel. So. Somebody like a silencer phone? No, whereas it happens. So what we're hearing obviously is that this is going to be coming back to you. What is your end goal? How much do you want to? Collect, because right now, there is still the option of collecting, uh but now that collection is going on to the December tax bill. Which I would assume that that would be, given the consideration that the the principal taxes that are derived out of the township and the county and every single millage. Fall on the winter tax bill, that's probably why the special assessment district was put on the summer tax bill. They have a little bit of a, an economic reprieve. So, and we looked into that statute, so even if we can get uh an agreement and a petition to be brought back to this board. Um, by equitable means that follow the law. Then we start the process going down that road. And so our ask as a a district is what you want to collect and what is reasonable for your collections and your activities. And again, I would also practice the fact that engineering and other extenuating activities. Would actually have to be a potential secondary special assessment. So. So. The the ball is really.
December this year, the resolution.
And that is where disappointed clarification, um, and so, yeah. I just want to make sure everybody's hearing, uh because I I actually started going down a different. I just want to make sure everybody's hearing, uh because I, I actually started going down a different tangent and I apologize. So if we can find resolution and direction moving forward with an equitable means of division by, by parcel owner. Then that can be brought back, and so it can still get on to the December tax bill for this cycle. But what we can do is going into the subsequent years of what the four remaining in this district as it's looking at for a term. That the remaining four years would be able to be put on to the July tax bill. So that would also give some reprieve for economics, because like I said, two thirds of your taxes are usually collected on the December tax bill. But the ball's back in your court, because therein, this was driven by the district and brought to the township. The township, without bullying or any other means of collusion, I like your language, sir. Uh. Tried to do it the right way. Many things in the township were done the wrong way historically. And, and this board takes a lot of heat for it, but once you find things are wrong, you cannot unsee them. So we're trying to get this district the greatest level of success, sounds like the, the principle, uh as, as has already been mentioned formerly. This is now a dead, there's no reason to even move forward with resolutions in regards to this. So again, this is back in your court as residents of North Point Shores, what are your anticipations? What cost do you want to capture and what is equitable? And if you wanted to do it by parcels, that's seventy nine parcels that are there, now I believe Mr. LaFave stated that seventy, uh aligns with seventy owners. We don't need to touch upon lots, parcels and confuse assessing methodology. Those are legal standards, that's how we derive taxes and collect taxes. So. The ball is back in your court, residents of North Point Shores, this board has heard you, we are, would be amendable to a legal methodology that's brought forward. Utilizing Public Act one thirty nine, which is very succinct in its language as to the maintenance and repair of roads. And that language is concurrent with the petition that's before you. If there's bigger overarching uh end goals of paving North Point Shores. Then I would also implore you to have that conversation, have that conversation amongst yourselves. And with the board at the County Road Commission, because they would be the entity that would have to take on a private road. We do not do that. So. I, I don't know exactly what the timeline would be to start this process to get it on the December tax bill, we can kind of reverse engineer what those timing mechanisms are, because it's very succinct by law. How many times you have to advertise by the time you have public hearings, et cetera, et cetera. So we can look at what that would be, um, and get Mr. LaFave and his board members. Here's, here's a start point, which direction do you want to go? This came in in the twelfth hour, we tried to hammer it out, took a lot longer. Because we found out how erroneous it was. And so, me, yes ma'am, if you'd like to stand at the podium and state your names at the records.
So. So when you're saying.
Your name, ma'am, for the record and the address.
Eight five five eight hundred point shows.
Okay.
Okay. So when you say, like, like I know there are people out there who just bought like three parcels, lots, whatever they are, they're, they're ready to sell. So. If they put those, are they considered, I mean, they pay for three. Lots of parcels, right? They don't just pay for one because they can put that into one.
So yeah, you're, you're touching on two different topics, so. Land, land valuation and combinations or splits of lots are inherently a civil matter, but if you were to buy three lots in this exercise that you bring forward, if there's an owner that owns three parcels. Depending on where the section line falls, whether it's within a meets and bounds, or whether it's in a planted subdivision. That has a legal standard whether or not they can be combined. Now, if all the stars are aligned in that map. And it's within a meets and bounds and it's within the same section, those three parcels can be legally combined.
And then they will only pay one.
It depends on how this district wants to be set up.
See, that wouldn't be quite there.
So. Uh, that's to do our, our fiduciary fiscal responsibility as, as the key caretakers and collectors of the monies for this special assessment, which we definitely do. Collect and send to the principal parties at hand. We are trying to do everything to the best of our ability, and so however this district needs to be defined. And you have, I don't know if there's a perfect uh scenario where there isn't going to be an outlier where somebody in this district is not going to be satisfied. I don't know. Such is life, but I can say if you include uh Holson in this district. They, within one vote, have the ability to kill it. So.
Is that only if it's on a linear?
Right. Yeah, well, no, they would actually at that point in time have a percentage just by, yeah, linear.
But linear, but if, if each owner had.
So then they just have one vote.
Right, 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 that, that's the point that I was trying to make.
So that's how you defeat the linear frontage with Holson, if you will. Are there, are there any other uh opportunities, this is, we're still in public hearing for uh this special assessment district? Is there, is there any other comment for public hearing before the board closes public hearing? Because the way I have interpreted the, the concerns that have been brought forward by the residents of this district. Are that you need to go back to the drawing board and figure out what's equitable equally amongst property owners. And then we can start the process potentially over it.
I can clarify one thing, if um. If the citizens decided to go against each owner equally, and you included Lafarge, they'd probably be just happy because they'd be considered one owner with one assessment, they still could kill it. The language still allows that twenty percent equation to come in, but it seems like they'd be less likely to do so if, uh, if they're not paying.
They could be part of the group, right?
They could be part of the group.
They would.
Let me understand what you just said, does that mean that, that if we took just the seventy nine. Property owners. Not, not referring to linear feet. And, and so everybody basically had one vote. Are you su- are you suggesting then that? One property owner, in this case Lafarge, who has the most linear footage? Could kill the whole thing, even though they're voting it on a per, one person.
Yeah, Act one eighty eight, Act one eighty eight, still uh, uh stating regardless of which.
Method.
Method you pick under Act one thirty nine. Legal ease here, uh, that record land, record owners of land constituting more than twenty percent of the total frontage upon the road. Could still, could still object.
So there's a list in there.
Could I have? Yeah, yeah, forty one point seven two three. Subsection one B. So then if somebody did that, then the township board would say we need the fifty one percent petition so they can, yeah. Of, but then if it's a. Fifty, more than fifty percent of the total frontage upon the road.
So now you go back to.
Back with tons of.
So you go back.
Hence, henceforth, probably the, the principal reason that Lafarge Holson was never included in this, because no matter which methodology you pick. If they were. In one foul swoop, they could kill this district.
Back when they were approached, probably they just went, we don't care, just don't include us and we won't get in your way, but include us.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It up, Lafarge had like seventeen lots. So that's why they started off and saying they, everyone only had one boat, no matter how many lots you have. So that Lafarge could not have seventeen boats, but now they probably only have. One or two lots.
Technically, they have three parcels that are on the lake side of, of principal parcel that is also contiguous with the primary land on the opposite side of the road. Same parcel though. So. I guess if there's no other questions or direction. Um. There's no need to go into resolutions after we conclude this public hearing. Our, our position is back to you, how much money do you want to raise for what activities?
I just want to throw this out there as an option, I know. That this is talked about for five years and that if they wanted to do this winter bill and then the next four years after that, put it on the summer bill. But if they wanted, they could just hold off altogether and not even start this until next year on the summer bill, you would just miss a year.
Yeah. Have enough money, uh, calculated it in to do the snowfall.
Never mind. So I was just trying to help it not be on the winter bill.
I'm Brian Dunblaker, seven four one two, North Point Shores, um, just one quick question, um, when we met with you earlier, um, and it was brought up again tonight. I just want to make sure that there's not a mechanism in place that allows you to put a cap. Is that correct? If we're going to bill at six foot of, if we're going to bill at six dollars a foot, six dollars a foot, there's not a. Mechanism for you to collect that has a cap, is that correct?
If you went per owner. And you got a good grip on what you wanted to spend. We all agree it's going to be forty eight thousand dollars.
That's something that we could decide to divide by seventy nine or, but I'm saying for you as the township. Have a mechanism to do a cap, the way we worded it the first time was a cap of six hundred dollars and you rejected it. I believe it was because you said there's not a mechanism in place, I just want to make sure that that's true. And have it on the, on the record that that was the true reason that we didn't have a cap as an option.
Well, you're citing a, what, two month old conversation, and so I'm not going to say for the record.
Well, you should know now if there can be a cap or not, though, so you don't have to.
It would be a determining factor of. The, the district itself, I, if you want, so what this was, the cleanest way out, because once again. The cleanest way out was by at that point in time, linear frontage.
Right.
Because that was the, the most equitable way, so your, your question is, is there a cap?
No, is it possible to have a cap? So. There's not, right? You either collect it six dollars a foot or you don't, is that correct? So you can't say.
By linear foot.
Right.
But so you can't cap it, like even if you own two thousand.
I just want to make sure that it, I don't want it to appear that we didn't provide correct information when we changed it, because we initially. Would in the past have a cap, but that got changed because it's by linear foot and we couldn't do that, I just want to clarify. Because some people are still asking about it, so I just wanted to bring it up, and it's like, no, it's either, it's either six dollars a foot or it's not, there is no way to.
Or it's by outside of that linear frontage, it's that or by equal share of the entire district.
Great, I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify it.
Yeah.
Related to that is you, you, there's always some uncertainty with any special assessment district, because you don't know, a bunch of people go to the tax tribunal. All of a sudden there are, are legal expenses and.
Yeah.
Right, thank you, okay.
Oh. Brought up. Take my rant.
Well.
I know this is dragging on, uh, to Brian's question, um. If there is a mechanism to put a cap. By our choice, does that mean then? The six hundred dollars per owner or parcel would limit. The amount of total cost that the township would then spend. To do the maintenance, the snow removal, the grading, the chloriding, the.
We don't spend the money, we don't spend it, you're, the North Point Shores Board spends the money.
It would limit your board.
Right, so it limits what we, and then when we're out of the money.
Got to go back to the well.
Right, okay. I just wanted to clarify that a bit more, thank you.
Okay.
Apparently, if I understand, if I may.
Yes.
Trust you. Is the, the cap that they're asking about, I don't see how that can be done when they're using linear footage.
It could, yeah.
Can't, but the cap can be, if they choose this other option that apparently was added to the statute last year, Tim, is that my reading? In other words, if they use that parcel.
If they do by owner.
By owner, yes.
But still, no matter what.
Have to pick a number.
They have to establish the cost of doing business.
Right.
And so I don't, the only, the only people that would benefit from a cap, as I would understand it, would be those people that have the, the most linear footage.
Exactly.
Which they're not going to use that methodology.
Right.
So it's going to be a simple division.
Right, you divide it seventy nine or ninety five or whatever the number is.
So we already, we already did that in February when we said we were going for six hundred dollars, ninety five lots, fifty seven thousand dollars. That was the number we were going for, then we turned in our estimates of the work that we may or may not do, it was way above that. But just to clarify, Act one thirty nine, first sentence says, upon receiving petition, the township board of any township may enter into a contract to make any maintenance or improvement. It's not a separate item to improve the road. It's included in the act.
While the special assessment district needs to be defined in the petition. To include whatever you want it to include, just so all, all the people that are deciding whether to say yea or nay, need to know.
Does it include?
What are you talking about? So.
It says maintenance and gravel, but not limited to in our petition, the original petition that came from the language.
I, I'm going to recommend to get more specific than that for the next full round, yeah.
And we went back historically and looked at every petition that your firm wrote from the beginning of this.
Our firm never knew you were talking about engineering for paving.
No, but we didn't, we didn't just pull this out of thin air, we, we used the petition language that we had been using.
Some of the objections that were filed, they raised the issue of, what do you mean engineering for a future road?
The objections that were filed were filed because of going to the linear footage, we never had trouble.
Summary is the engineering and surveying cost for the possibility of future road, obviously some people are for it and maybe some are against it, so I'm just saying as a matter of. Transparency, not that you weren't trying to be transparent, but let's make it crystal clear, here's what these funds can be used for.
We actually voted on it back in twelve or fourteen. You know, on paving the road down, we didn't realize how much time that would take. It's not our ultimate goal to have to pave it, what we want is a road that can be drained with culverts. You know, that's maintainable, right now it's a bottomless pit, we can never maintain it, it falls apart, any rain. So that's the issue that, whether some people, always the majority has voted for improvement also. We do have twenty percent tonight because of the leading footage issue, that was.
I think there was more than one issue, and I, I, I would say that it wasn't because I.
Quality.
And misdirected into any individual.
No, it's not about being misdirected, it's about it being, being able to be equal cost spread, and some people cannot combine their lots, so that issue.
It's still going to be that, like I said, there is no perfect scenario, what is the best way for the majority? And in all actuality, they're both pretty equal, there's going to be people that are just as upset with the equal share versus.
But the seventy owners that voted in February for the improvement based on what they owned, whether it be a lot or a parcel, passed it. So if you can't add the language to something we already passed.
To be legal, not to be.
Yeah, but we can't just recreate a petition on the fly and say this is.
And you can't add a cap to your, your linear footage petition.
That was never, that was part of uh Mr. Dunblacker's question is, is there a cap based upon linear frontage?
Well, can there be?
I don't.
If we, you're saying you're kicking it back to us.
Yeah.
So can there be a?
So the, the best way for, if you want to discuss the word cap or as confusing as lots versus parcels could be. What is an equal share amongst the seventy owners and the seventy nine parcel owners that everybody's? Good with spending that gets the end goal of a well maintained road.
And that's exactly what we did in February.
Uh, well.
But the assessor, some reason isn't here, telling us what was the main problem with that? Why, why can't it be?
Well, and, and Mr. LaFave, you were at that table, as well as other people, when we started discussing the, the errors that we found in those initial conversations. And it's not just one particular issue, it was a historic. Pattern of, well, it's, it's just always been done that way, so let's just keep pushing it through. Um. And, and at some point in time, here's your start, stop point. Let's look at this with utmost respect and sincerity to the law and actually clean it up. With the three different methodologies that were being used, Mr. LaFave. This was actually with what was presented out of your February petition, without having to redraft everything completely. This was the cleanest, most timely way to get this petition brought forward to the board with approval by resolutions to get it on your summer tax bill.
But right now, we're going to have to put it to a vote, what our petition is written like with the members.
I think you just heard the majority of the people that were here in disapproval of what was brought forward, and so. And so our question back to you as the board of this district is. How much do you want to collect and what's palatable to the seventy residents representing those seventy nine parcels?
And that's what we did. We raised it to six hundred per and we came up with fifty seven thousand. We're at thirty eight thousand, we've been. Trying to maintain the road.
Yeah, well. We already. Their rate of calculation upon six hundred dollars per parcel puts you at forty seven thousand four hundred dollars.
Right.
Yeah. So is forty seven four, you're gonna, you're gonna make it. So then.
It has to go at least to seven thirty.
Well, and that's what the math broke out as was that seven twenty one.
Seven twenty one.
Fifty two. To get to that fifty seven thousand dollars. Now is seven twenty one fifty two, a more palatable number for the general consensus of this district. That's, that's to the district to really have that conversation. So. Is there any other? Discussion for under the public here?
Move to this.
We have a motion on the table to close the public hearing.
I'll support that.
Been supported further discussion.
Is there anybody online?
Oh, well, they, they can. Is there anybody online that would like to address the board before we close the public hearing? Thank you for pointing that out. I do see any, I don't. Okay, and we don't see any other comments, thank you for pointing that out, trustee Crow. Um, no further discussion, roll call please. We didn't. Actually, sorry, we did. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye. Opposed, the same. Uh, public hearing has been closed. Uh, in regards to the North Point Shore's special assessment. Next item of old business is the North Northeast Michigan Material Management Authority newsletter insert.
Oh. I did some research.
Actually, yeah, I I'll do apologize. How about we just take a quick moment while people.
Can we take a quick minute?
Yep.
Thank you.
To. Conclude their business and move on with their evening, uh, which leads us to our next point of old business, which is B, uh, the Northeast Michigan Material Management Authority newsletter, Laura.
Um, I brought this to our last meeting and I didn't have costs associated because it would. Be from the township expense to pay this, so it would be for approximately seven thousand summer tax bills to be sent out. The cost for the two sided copies would be one hundred and twenty three dollars and twenty cents. And the paper would be seventy dollars, so a total of a hundred and ninety three twenty. And I took it out of printing and publishing from the Board of Trustees. Um, the insert is information for the Northeast Michigan Materials Management Authority. It has where the recycling bin locations are when they do the household hazardous waste free on collection dates. Um, they have a price list of how much it costs to take things there, their hours. And so it would just be to. Add this in the summer tax bills. At the township's cost or the Northeast Michigan Materials Management.
Would this be in color?
No.
I see that.
Cause it costs more for a color.
And we will actually be copying them ourself here in our copier.
Yes.
Does our copier have any kind of limits or anything about how much we can or can't do?
No. We pay per copy. Right. It keeps track of how many copies we make, black and white, how many, so we will pay. So she's got it figured out in here, the point zero zero eight eight.
Right. So for two sided copies, it would be a total of a hundred and twenty three twenty for the copies. But seventy dollars additional for the paper. But it's just printed in black and white. White paper. That's right, black ink on white paper.
I, I, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, I think this is actually benefit to citizens because frankly, when I got a copy of it in the back. Uh, I kept it because I want to know that, have that information at my fingertips when.
Does anybody want to see it?
We want to reduce the cost of.
You're coming in.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you are you to pay whatever by twelve cents.
Say fourteen cents.
Did you guys, I mean.
Did everybody see the? So. Any other discussion or is there a motion to move forward?
This is. Do they, how do they get into the envelope?
They, they go to the county because um, there's a.
The county folds and stops some with our tax.
Additional cost.
But no, no, I just have to give the county. Um, let them know if we have an insert and if we do, just they need to be printed on twenty pound paper, which that's what, and they just need it by June tenth. All the copies will take them, take them there, they print our tax bills and they would just. Put them together in the envelope, but doesn't cost us any extra postage.
We also put this on a page.
It is.
So and then also with that, so I mean, there is also going to be a potential link to a URL for the master plan going through the planning commission. That would be, I think you put her in touch with Ted in regards to Denise Klein through NEMCOG. Uh.
Oh, on our tax.
Yes, right on the tax bill and that would be for a survey in regards to the master plan that the planning commission is going to be starting on this year. So we have before us a recommendation, I believe from Laura Ellery Summers to move forward with an insert for recycling at our cost of one hundred and ninety three dollars and twenty cents to be paid out of GL one oh one, one oh one, nine hundred point zero zero zero. Is there a motion to that effect?
No, make their motions for.
Motion and support for their discussion. Seeing none, uh, roll call, oh, actually, I roll call this cash.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Kalavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes.
And. So moving forward, uh, we have trustee Lappin, would you like to take the next item of the fire committee, file twenty twenty?
So we met. With an agenda. And on that agenda were several items to that we discussed. Uh, we talked a little bit about trying to get some additional costs relative to the, uh. Let me just do one real quick thing here, I'll make sure that I don't. Go too deep into whatever it is I'm going to talk about here. Alright, so on the agenda, it just talks about the the twenty twenty rescue. Uh, we will add maybe at the next meeting, a couple of other things that we talked about. So. We talked at some length about the twenty twenty. Vehicle. And I believe Chief Hanson gave each of you in today's email. Uh, reasons that he feels the, uh, the unit should be. Uh, kept and and not sold. I have a couple of other comments from that meeting as well. So. So we talked about. The, 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 the usage of the, of the Ford one fifty. And he has pointed out, if you all got your email today, uh, reasons to maintain that. A couple of things that we also talked about that I thought would be worth discussion was that we, we know that there is a. An expense associated with with the vehicle. And so one of the things that we had talked about, because it was pretty clear, uh, from looking back on the. Uh, prior meeting of November twenty eighth, I guess it was. Um. That the vehicle like this should be used for township purposes. And we felt that if we maintain this vehicle, that's. The pleasure of this board, that that vehicle would be housed in the cap, in the township and that, uh. It would either be housed either at the south station or the north station, I think we talked about the south station. And that it would be used for purposes as as the chief has has delineated. Uh, as well as going to meetings and those sorts of things, it would not be used as a day use, uh, as a, as a. Back and forth to to work vehicle. So, um, that made, that made sense to me. Uh, we also talked about if we sold it, uh, we would be able to. Buy all the turnout gear that 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 we, that the township has, uh, the fire department needs. So, and so we spoke a little bit more about those sorts of things. And I think at the end of the day, the department would like to keep the unit with with those expectations that it would be used for. The items that Chief has pointed out and. The only caveat that I would add to that is that it would, uh. Not leave the township.
Thank you. Uh, you say.
Um, I reviewed this, um, I did want to make a few. Um, corrections on it, I did talk to Terry King regarding whether the warranty was non refundable and non transferable.
Thank you.
And it is not transferable, but it is refundable.
It's not transferable.
It is not, no, I just talked to him at about five thirty.
Okay.
Are you going off to the newest company that I sent all the work?
Yes, I am.
Cause I have a question mark at the end of that as well and I too called Kerry, Kerry King to find that out this afternoon.
And I thought I was going to try to call him too, and I thought. When he was speaking to us and the benefit of buying the extended warranty was that it was transferable.
It's not, but we, they pro rata.
Okay.
The refund, also, um, there's a line that says the proceeds of the sale of this vehicle should. Be returned to the equipment fund.
Yes.
It's not should be, it has to be, there's no choice in the matter. It was bought with equipment mileage money, it goes back into the equipment mileage money fund. Um, and I guess I I'm questioning why the Chevy Blazer is no longer currently licensed.
Because we licensed.
As discussed in the fire committee meeting, uh, we licensed that vehicle since we had the opportunity to do that. And we only have the supplies taking out of the white Trailblazer and putting into that truck.
So we had three ambulances that were licensed plus the Trailblazer. So. If we had four things that had the equipment to be licensed, why, where did the fourth?
The license that was from the two thousand and three ambulance and the supplies from that originally went to the white Trailblazer. Now, when we had the twenty twenty truck in service, when the two new trucks came, that was taken out of the Trailblazer and licensed onto the twenty twenty.
Cause I thought we had to buy additional things. Equipment for the Trailblazer when it came.
The only thing that was purchased for that was the fully backboard, this full side of backboard, um, of that vehicle.
I just want to say that when this was presented and I too went and rewatched several of the board meetings with discussion of this twenty twenty and you yourself. Said that we could sell this twenty twenty once we got.
We can, we can do anything, right? We could.
Well, I feel like it was sold to me in the way that it was a stopgap measure. We bought it because we didn't know when the new, well, the twenty twos never came in. We didn't know when the twenty threes were going to come in. We needed something as a stopgap measure and that's how it was sold to me.
And that's, that's what the committee decided. Uh, and it was my director when I first came here as the fire chief to get rid of the ambulance as soon as possible. So I've done that.
And and that's, and I'm, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying that what I believed was sold to me was that this twenty twenty was a temporary purchase. Just until the twenty twenty threes came in.
Uh, no, at a.
That is how it was presented to me, how I interpreted it.
At a fire committee meeting, uh, I could pull out the the notes for.
I'm not in the fire committee meetings, so.
The, the, there was an original con, there was a, in in the October board meeting. Uh, this was discussed and basically sent to the, uh, to the fire committee. Uh, fire committee obviously met between November twenty fourth and, uh, excuse me, October twenty fourth and November twenty eighth. And at that point, we definitely discussed it. I know that, I know that I personally, uh, was, was concerned about doing that because I didn't know when exactly these new units were going to be coming in. But I, I think I indicated that on my own personal, uh, vehicle that what, what was never available. Soon became available and so I always felt that that was probably going to come in. Pretty quick, but yeah, there was definitely some, some discussion about whether or not, uh. The value after afterwards, and I do believe that there is value for that, for this vehicle. Uh, afterwards, but it does, as we discussed at the, at the, at the, uh, fire committee meeting, it really does. Deplete. If we, if we sell it, it sort of. Puts that money back into the equipment fund for future need because we know that that equipment fund is now. No more tax money going to come in there. And so, and so. Uh, with the, with the need for, with this tanker, uh, which the chief has done a great job of whittling away at that. Um, um, it would still, it 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 leaves us a very little future money, so that was, that was the big concern. Uh, but I do see the benefit of of having this vehicle. Um, with the understanding that we have to be frugal and we have to try to find grant monies and all the other things because the the voter has spoken.
Mission, did you?
No.
Laura.
I just have a couple of questions, so. I guess one thing is, is that I just want to have clear in my head is, you know. I mean, I see. Like we talked about that we need turnout gear, do we need turnout gear more or this truck? Or do we have a better way of financing the turnout here?
So based on our last fire committee meeting, I'll just, if you're taking me down that road, I'll. I proposed, uh, some options to the fire committee and we finally have a direction as to where we're going to look at getting a vehicle. Uh, a, a new tanker, if you will.
Oh, okay.
And the, you know.
I was going to say, I don't think we, I was sitting at that meeting, I mean, we, we deleted one of four potential options.
But yeah, we were basically, we were going to look at CSI and we were going to look at Missouri, yeah, Missouri.
Quickly talking about the tanker, according to our policy and procedures, anything over twenty thousand dollars has to have an RFP put out. Have we done that?
This was an example, I think, more.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause it's specialty.
So I guess I'm not sure what you can buy an example.
So. Go ahead.
Yeah, so we can't afford to actually buy one that. We would like to spec out, so there's a company that takes and makes the apparatus basically, uh, on a chassis, so. Um, it's not a, you can walk in and buy it or we can order it at some that would be put together. Um, on a chassis.
But it would still fall under that.
Yeah, but this was something that we use as an example of something.
But we still need to put in our.
Correct.
Okay.
We're not, yeah, we're not there yet.
Oh, okay.
What, what I proposed to the fire committee is that there's an option to have a company build a brand new unit on the back of a slightly used chassis. Cause we originally talked about looking to find a used chassis that's already to go. The market is not good for that, uh, but. You know, this company that, one of the companies that I had talked to can come in under three hundred thousand. Uh, thus remaining even after all the bills are paid and the clerk gave us this detailed sheet at the fire committee about what's yet to come out of the, uh, fund. That'll leave us over forty some thousand dollars just for turnout gear. So.
How do we know that?
Yeah.
If we haven't put out an RFP.
So we have one quote right now, we have a quote, uh, that'll come in under three hundred thousand for worst case scenario.
Wait, why are we getting, I don't know.
No, we're not, it's, it's, it's not technically a.
I feel like we're putting.
It's really just trying to.
Have an idea.
Really tried to do is just get a feel for what this, it was a used chassis. Uh, and then built around that chassis would be.
So, but, so before we continue down.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Yeah, before we go down this rabbit hole, we're, we're talking about the greater good now.
Right.
Principally, the discussion was tanker pumper. But what we have before us is a decision to be made upon the twenty twenty Ford rescue.
And I just feel like it's all.
Let me just add one more thing to it. Laura had brought up the turnout here and one of the things that chief has looked into. Um, was there is a company out there that will. Lease the or rent the, uh, the equipment. But, but we don't, we didn't know at the time if that was a sort of a lease with option to buy, so in other words, if we. Pay whatever the monthly fee is, whether it be a rent or lease, or does that, could that apply towards the purchase of that turnout?
Aren't we currently doing something like that?
We have that.
I mean, we tried, I guess that.
Oh, it did.
That's a.
Oh, that is.
The answer to that, that. Trustee Lappin was just talking about at the fire committee meeting. The company that I met down at FDIC and. The company that I met down at FDIC and explored this avenue. I I responded back to the fire committee. I believe I I responded to that in the note that. There is a lease with the option to buy that.
We didn't know at the.
At the time, at the time, at the meeting, we didn't know if we could lease.
Yeah, I think we, you learned that at the meeting, but then we were wondering. Is it thirty percent, forty percent, a hundred percent? What percentage goes towards that?
So.
Is there a problem with leasing with equipment mileage money? Is that something we can do?
I don't remember the the wording, but it was, uh, for fire equipment. Apparatus purposes.
Okay.
It's.
All right, I just want to make sure we're staying within.
I voted against buying two new vehicles one after we bought the used one. Because I anticipated we'd be in this position. It angers me that we are. It also angers me that you're apparently acting on fire committee. Conversations or direction. Uh, because the fair committee is a committee of this board and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Supervisor. But committees don't make decisions. They bring recommendations to us. And so anything that you do should be based on a recommendation to this board that they passed on. I don't understand a lot of the things in your email. I wasn't even aware that we had a Polaris Ranger. But I don't know why that's being called around in the back pickup all the time, if that's what is the case. I don't know why it matters which pickup of the three, uh, hauls the ice rescue equipment. Uh, that I don't understand. The one thing I do agree with you with is that the. How or I guess it is, whatever it is, the SUV that we got from the state. Probably should be taken out of service because it's a money pit. Uh, it was from the beginning. And I don't understand the smoke detector thing, cause I thought the city was doing that countywide.
Well, if I may, trustee Reinhardt.
I'd like to finish.
I'm sorry.
So, um. I don't see, we didn't see the need when we ordered two new fire, uh, or F one fifties. Um, at that time for three, and I still don't see the need. That's all I have.
So at this point in time. What direction is it of the board to to commence with in regards to the twenty twenty or F one fifty? Is this something that, uh, as trustee Lappin brought forward is a belief that it would serve, uh, the greatest good in remaining in our fleet? Or is this an item to be added to the fixed disposal asset list and figure out the best methodology?
Well, I just wondered, I mean, you know, Steve spoke from on behalf of the fire committee and things like that, but. Do you want to expound on any of these?
I certainly do. I didn't know if I was supported the.
You understand that that's a committee.
No, I know.
And if that's the case, then I look to committee member trustee Kroll, otherwise known as number eleven. Um, and everybody, including myself as fire committee members that sat in that last meeting.
How about me as the fire chief that runs your fire department? Do I have, do I have any?
Yeah, but I'm talking to the board right now, Chief Hanson. So you as a department head have the right to give some insight back to this board, but you're also not a board member. And so that's why. Profess is actually at this board. We listen to department heads and recommendations. We listen to committee chairs and recommendations. But my interpretation of that meeting wasn't as rosy as s- some may forecast. Um, I heard things that were disturbing, maybe now in this third iteration of a proposal, it's changed. But trustee Kroll, do you have any comments as to that?
So, you know, we've we've put a lot of money into that vehicle. Would it be great to have a third vehicle? Yes. Um. But at the end of the day, it's the board's prerogative. I mean, if they want to sell it or do it, then it is what it is. It's the board's decision. Um, as a committee, it was our job to discuss it, come back to the board with our, uh, recommendation.
Is that the recommendation?
Um, yeah, my recommendation would be to maintain, keep the vehicle in our, in our fleet. And that it would be kept in the township.
I understood that was coming from you, but I didn't understand if that was.
We don't, I I would say that we safely don't have a consensus.
Yeah, that's true. We, yeah.
And that, that was my point.
I guess your point is well taken, Russ. I, uh. That's what I said I would bring forward, but, uh. Yeah, wasn't a consensus, no.
I'll make the motion of the latter, the of the alternatives that you gave, that we dispose of the vehicle. I'll support that.
We have a motion on the table and support to add the twenty twenty vehicle to the fixed asset disposal list.
Supported by trustee Paul.
And discussion for the discussion.
Right now, I feel financially, having that third vehicle is more of a luxury than a necessity. So I don't understand why, when we have all these other things that we need. We're having that third vehicle for a.
Well, first off, it serves as a command vehicle, whether it's a take home vehicle or not. In a accident scene, having that extra lighting, uh, having another vehicle, a marked vehicle coming on scene. Uh, another thing that the board should consider, we had a lot of donated items that were put onto this truck. Over twenty six hundred that I know of for sure, uh, and the bester company, uh, their engineering, they did all, you know, they did the. Box for the, uh, uh, there's sirens units on the front, that type of stuff. We had private donations from. From staff, we had donations from, uh, different businesses to, uh, keep that truck operational. And you know, some of the dangers that you have responding to runs without a marked vehicle. There's a fire chief locally that got called to, uh, an emergency the other night in the township or in the county. And, uh, he pulled into the yard, he doesn't have a marked vehicle and he was met at the front door with a rifle. I'm not sure. If, uh, trustee Kroll knows about that situation, but he said, who are you and what are you doing on my property? If we pull in, we have a recognizable vehicle, uh, it is very, uh, much utilized. Just u- utilize it again today. It pulls our wildland, uh, tr- trailer with our side by side in it. Uh, it's gonna have all the water rescue gear in it during the winter time, cause that trailer will be converted to a winter operation. It's gonna have heat in it. We used to have ambulances to get changed into. We don't have that anymore. So you have to stand out in the snow and get in your, uh, rescue suit. So having that vehicle to pull the trailer is essential for us. And, you know. I've set here and and a set many lists of things for you as the reasons why I think it should be kept. Uh. We need to quit going backwards in this township and keep moving forward. We have the potential of, uh, a fire inspector coming on. Uh, and you know, that individual would have to have a vehicle for going out and doing inspections, so that v- vehicle would be available.
You mentioned we need to keep going forward and I totally a hundred percent agree with that. I don't know how we're going forward. I don't know what our plan is. I don't know what direction. So it's hard to make any of these decisions without knowing.
We're actively seeking out grants for different things.
Is our plan? What are?
That is the question, isn't it? I've asked for a strategic planning session that with the board would just sit down, me and the fire department, we actually. Uh, supervisor Skibby said that he is the planning section, uh, in the meeting the other day. Uh, if I need to talk to the board, it's him that I talk to.
Because I am your direct supervisor and I'm not gonna allow more things to be taken out of context or misquoted, especially in this context. Everybody at this table, including both of the fire committee members. And I'm not gonna go down this rabbit hole, Chief Hanson. To that point, you make points, you have some valid points, but to trustee Reinhardt's question. Do the other two F one fifties have trailer hitches? If so, then that's a defeated position. We've had things in the, in your proposals that are untruthful. And so we're trying to find the best way forward. And if our principal direction is our biggest need is a pumper tanker. Then should that not be our, in terms of apparatus acquisition, our primary focus?
I'm saying we can adequately fund our pumper tanker and forty thousand plus of turnout gear. Based on the calculations that you provided for the la- the clerk provided for the last fire committee meeting, there's that kind of money available.
Yeah, the other one, the, i- i- and as I I I'll say again, the. That well will dry up.
Absolutely.
And and until the, you know, the taxpayer wants to pay more. Uh, we're gonna find ourselves in a really, really tough financial position. That's, that's the reality. And so I, uh, I still believe it's a, uh, uh, an asset to be kept, but, uh, it is.
So. Steve, you mentioned keeping it, but parking it at night. So. I think, I feel like everything rolls in together. So we have this two thousand and five Blazer. That is a money pit from day one. What's the plan for that? Are we planning on keeping that too?
I wouldn't think so.
So would somebody amend? I mean, I don't know. Are we gonna?
We're gonna, if I might interrupt, at the time of my employment here, it was discussed in the personnel meeting. That I would be afforded that vehicle to run. I got that from the state of Michigan and that was.
We we got it from the state of Michigan from Lowe's, Roselake. And then we went up to Gaylord and picked it up. I was there. It is a indefinite loan and it is. Derek declared ours. Any equipment that's added to it is ours. And if we ever want to disperse of it, we simply give it back to the state of Michigan.
Right, so. I mean, to perform my duties as the fire chief, having that vehicle, getting back and forth, the 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 twenty twenty. That can remain in the township, uh, but all my stuff's in it, all my certified. Stuff that I would normally carry is all in there, cause we don't have the funding to equip another rescue vehicle. So we've traded everything over to the newer vehicle, assuming that that would be the new response vehicle for the township. Moving forward instead of in reverse.
So are there any other discussion amongst the board? Yes, trustee Paul.
You know, this fire department's been on life support for years. We were constantly struggling to get it through the year and trying to keep the cost down. We talk about this pumper tanker and we're talking about putting a used vehicle under a brand new rig. I I, that doesn't ring any good bells with me in the fact that we're always behind the eight ball. It seems like we're trying to spend money quicker than we can even begin to have it. I mean. Here, this, this, this truck, personally, I think is a, is a luxury, which was stated. You got firemen that. Are are looking for races. You got part time people that are looking for races. And we're buying a fancy truck. I I just. It it confuses me.
Trustee Polly, if I may. I've been your fire chief for a little over a year and a half. I can't deal with all the problems that you previously had at this board. We have made several monumental things forward on this department since I've been your fire chief.
Except getting money in a place where it's gonna be beneficial to the fire department.
Well, sir, I don't know about you, but I was out campaigning for a millage. I didn't see you coming out as a board member.
So, Chief Hanson, this conversation is concluded.
Sure, if the truth comes out, it's always concluded.
No, actually, trust me when I say on a professional note, we're gonna continue to move forward without dispersing any more truth. Um, we have a motion, we have support, yeah. It 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 doesn't make good of the order to state what was said in the last fire committee meeting. You were there, you know, because you rebuttal saying, he's just a passionate person and we all say things we don't mean. Does that ring a bell, Ms. Banks? Your pop.
It's not.
I know. So, that being said, I'm not gonna go down that rabbit hole. So we have a motion, we have support. Any further discussion? So the motion is, uh, to put the twenty twenty board, uh, on the fixed disposal asset list. That is the motion that is to move and support it. Roll call, please.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
No.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
No.
Trustee Crawl.
No.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
Moving forward then. Okay, sir. The door is there.
Um, so it's fair.
So we can actually conclude that business and personnel and my recommendation was that we meet immediately. It failed. It, yeah, pass. Sorry. Moving forward, new business introduction of ordinance one fifty three, can be mine.
Sure. If no. Uh, the board directed me to, uh, draft a compensation, local officials compensation commission ordinance. I've done so. It wasn't that difficult in that we've got a statute that really provides guidance and we've got one statute. And it's, uh, MCL forty two point six A. Uh. Internet's great on some other communities that have done it and they'll track the statute. And so I did so also and, uh, we're charter township, so we have to introduce an ordinance first. Uh, I will then, uh, have it published a notice of introduction. And the notice of introduction will state that we come back on. Let's have that date on. Hang on, June, June meeting. June twenty six, is our June meeting? So that's when the board will consider whether to adopt the ordinance and go forward. And then I'll remind Nathan, the statute and the ordinance. Build in some time restrictions for appointing the commission. So I'll give you that heads up again and I'll give Michelle a heads up. Put it on the agenda, Haley. So all we need right now is a motion to introduce. Proposed ordinance number one fifty three.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. It's been moved and supported for their discussion.
Supported by.
On, under section four, meeting of the commission, talked about the commission shall not meet, uh. Shall meet for not more than fifteen session days in each odd number of years. That seems like a lot. So I mean, I take it that's just statute, that's just.
Statutory, yeah. All right. And, uh, they they constrain them, uh, and you gotta make their determination within four, forty five days of the first meeting. And, uh, they gotta meet within thirty days of the ordinance effective date. So that's why it's kinda like, all right, get it all, get it all together. Why the, I don't know.
Member commission.
So legislature didn't want procrastination maybe, or I'm not sure. If you only got a year, odd numbered year to do it.
Oh, I thank you for providing statute. I had some questions too about it, you know, especially, you know, whether we should let the supervisor. Uh, appoint the the commission, but that's what the statute said.
That's what the statute said, yeah. Nothing ambiguous about it really. And then it's also weird when we adopt the, uh, ordinance. If it's adopted, gotta adopt a resolution too, directing us to adopt the ordinance. So I don't know if somebody was drinking when they drafted.
So, yeah, if if Nathan picks five people that are. His best buddies and family members, we still have to approve them.
Yes, you have the ultimate.
Right, so it's not like.
So now, this is not an exercise in nepotism.
And it does say no family, or yeah, no family, like he could do friends.
So they're, uh, you know, they investigate with the, with the, you know, with.
I'll be bringing for five well-rounded individuals that I'm sure that this board will.
And they don't get compensated for it.
They don't get compensated, which is. You know, it's a thing, you know, about a week per diem, or I mean, just it's.
Yeah.
It's just weird.
I thought it said they could be, uh, further expensive.
They had actual expenses, so maybe gas or something, but, uh.
Trustee Paul.
Or coffee.
What if you can't find five people?
I'm already, I I'm already halfway there.
I'm just saying.
You have two and a half people.
Two and a half people.
Yeah, that's how the math works. I'm I'm really happy with you guys. Uh, that's, that's applicable. So, nope.
So I guess, yeah, the the nature of it is you're looking for community minded people that are willing to put some time in and, uh.
Make a good decision.
Assist.
So we have a motion and support in regards to the introduction of ordinance one fifty three. Uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Tim. Uh, and so moving on to the next item of new business, uh, is a request, uh, from my department. As to moving forward with, uh, zoning administration or administrator certificate, uh, program. Uh, this is through MSU and this actually is a, uh. State, uh, certified, uh, course in regards to, uh, zoning, uh, administration. So obviously coming from me, I, uh, I would like, uh, to move forward with a motion for. Um, the expenditure, uh, that would be derived out of two GLs. One would be for the, the course itself. At a cost of, I believe it was five hundred and fifty dollars and then the hotel. At a cost of, I believe it was five hundred and fifty dollars and then the hotel stay. Um, of one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents. The cost of the course would be coming out of one oh one, one seven, one nine, five, seven, zero, 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 which has adequate funding. And then the um, hotel sale, it stays in transportation and travel and that GL is uh. One oh one, one seven, one eight, six, one, zero, zero, zero.
And then there'd be meals and, and, and the.
Some of them are included right in the training. So I mean, it's all. In one location, so. I don't care for Mount Pleasant that much. I'll probably stay right there, given the consideration that my task ahead of me is to know. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, PA one ten, twenty twenty-six and PA thirty-three of two thousand and eight.
Are you saying that? Stimulating?
This is gonna be. A, a, a weekend crash course and that coral zoning administration.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
It's on a weekend?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I was just looking at, at the credit card numbers. That you use for the class and then for the room.
Yeah.
Are these both? Your township card? Is this, and, well, because the numbers are different, seven, four, five, three and seven, three, five, two. I just thought it was kind of hot.
I see that the room has.
See, seven, three, five, two card and then the class with seven, four, five, three. I just thought it was kind of strange because I figured.
But that's a transaction number. I don't know if that's a card.
Visa.
Okay, that's not a trans number.
I gave, I gave the card and checked out the card that I thought had my name on it.
Maybe you're right that that's a trans number. Maybe that's not.
Says it's a trans number.
Okay. Anyway, I just don't know if we had to reimburse him.
No. We know.
If he put it on his personal.
I know how Michelle loves the reimbursement process, so.
Point on P and C cards. We try to use the P and C card as much as possible.
So is there a motion to move forward?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the table. So is there support?
I'll support it.
Been moved and supported for their discussion.
Are you gonna get Hulu for a month?
No, no, honestly, like, this is one of those things I got into of course and I wanted to get into and now I'm. A little, little, little concerned. It'll be, it'll be a good exercise. Uh, with that being said, um, if there's no other discussion, uh, roll call please.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving on to new business number three, which is a succession of resolutions all pertaining to assessing and then the sort. Um, and so Tim, do you want to just kind of introduce uh?
Yeah, these are, is it from time to time Alan Berger assessor. Asks us to uh, adopt resolutions that are required by the state tax commission and that make. His job uh, smoother. And so number three on the new business agenda, resolution and policy for the application of exemption. From property taxes. Number four, resolution and policy for the canvas of personal property and number five, resolution and policy for the audit procedures regarding. Granting or removal of real property exemptions. He gave us the format for these. I just put them in our usual. Resolution format. I use his wording. And uh. And so he's expecting us to adopt these one by one.
Yeah. So before us is the, the first resolution and resolution for policy and the application of exemption from property taxes. Um, is there a motion to move forward with uh, the resolution presented? We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
I'll, I'll catch up to you the second regulation.
Just, I don't have to read it.
Yeah, I, I, you know.
We don't have to listen to it.
I won't read any whereas is, uh, so roll call. If there's no further discussion on the first resolution, roll call vote please.
Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward to new business number four, resolution and policy for the canvas of personal property. Is there a motion? Uh, to move forward?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support? I got Crash Man on that. Uh, so we got motion and support for their discussion. Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, the third and final resolution, new business number five is the policy for the audit procedures regarding granting or removing. Of real property exemptions. Is there a motion to move forward with this resolution? We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported for their discussion.
The motion was made by trustee Polly.
Correct.
And just because I got whacked on my arm, I supported it.
Somebody talking with their hands, I'm trying to keep them close. Uh, with that being said, no further discussion, roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yeah.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yeah.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, next item of business is an invoice uh, for uh, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Uh, and that is for the maintenance and repair of two principal AC units. Uh, that in the treasurer's uh, office and that in the assessing uh, department. Yeah, well, there's stipulations on this. When the air conditioning is on, you can't open up all the windows. When the heat is trained. Don't open up all the windows.
See when I'm not here.
Uh huh. So I've entertained a motion to move forward with. So we have, is there a motion in regards?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion in regards to supporting the expenditure of five hundred and twenty-nine dollars to fixing the. Been moved and supported for their discussion. Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, the next item of business is a quote uh, from Eagle Supply and that is for the window washing. Uh, this is a. Uh, much needed annual maintenance. Uh, this is for the windows at the township offices and Northside Paradise Station inside and out. Uh, for a total of one thousand eighty dollars. Uh, and that would come out of, I believe, BL, uh, building and grounds maintenance.
Staff recommending this expenditure.
I recommended.
Yeah, honestly, it looks like. The inside of the office is, is on a dirt road, maybe not on North Point Shores, but a dirt.
You do it just once a year?
Once, did we even do it last year?
We have not done the inside. We did the outside only last year.
So.
But the, the inside have not been done in probably three years.
Is there a motion to move forward with the uh, quote for the window washings of interior and exterior windows?
So moved.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
Then moved and supported. Any further discussion?
This is South Side, North Side Fire Stations and.
Not the South Side. Oh, I thought it said South Side.
Not so, it's North Side, North Fire Station.
Oh, it did, okay. You want to watch them?
Right there. So we have motion and support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yeah.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward in new business is the SCBA uh, mask fit test. Uh, the recommendation uh, from Chief Hanson was uh, to approve a payment of seven hundred dollars to come on a GL. Two oh five, three, three, six, eight oh one, which is professional contractual services. Uh, for SCBA fit testing of twenty employees. Is there a motion to support the recommendation that's brought forward?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, uh, for the discussion.
In the Friday committee, just explain this a little bit. I don't know what this means.
SCBA?
Yeah, I don't know what this.
So this is the mask for um, their air apparatus, uh, and every year they have to do. Basically leak tests to make sure that it's, it's a sound.
Yeah, so leak test, it's not.
They want to make sure that.
Not a personnel fitting to a person.
Oh, that mask, it has to fit to that person.
Oh, does it? Okay.
So everybody's assigned a mask that's their mask.
Not right now. Mr. Ordway, would you like to stand on the podium?
I guess I always.
No, Jake Ordway was here previously a while back and uh, came back just recently, but. So what is going on is we have the, our SBA mask, we have three different sizes and we're just verifying that. Due to people changing over the years that their face is sealing properly inside the mask or the um. Immediate to danger to life and health type situations where we're in fires.
Are you allowed to have facial hair when you use?
No, no, and uh, yeah.
Mustache, can rock a mustache.
Yeah, yeah. 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 So.
Okay.
I figured I'd step in.
I think that the board members appreciate it a little bit more.
So if you pass the test, then can you grow a beard and then like?
So we have a motion and support to move forward with the cost of seven hundred dollars for the SCBA fit testing at the city. Uh, no other discussion, roll call please.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. My next item of business is the SCBA uh, breathing air compressor, compression maintenance. Uh, we had been in previously in a three-year contract with R and R that does the maintenance. On the air filling station. On, so I believe what is brought forward is a continuation, although costs have uh, risen quite dramatically. On regards to the service, um, but I believe it was the recommendation. Um, first off, to move forward with. The cost of. The initial uh, service. Which I am still somewhat confused on, uh, is this part of the contract? Um, but we have a, a bill here. It looks like this is an actual bill. Uh, for seven hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-eight cents uh, to be paid out of uh, two oh five, three, three, six, eight, zero, one, zero, zero, zero. Um. Second part of this would be an expansion of what I believe is the continuation of a three-year contract. With R and R. Um, for a total of four thousand eight sixty-four twenty-three. So we'll do in two different motions. Uh, first I entertain a motion to take the. Uh, recommendation of Chief Hanson uh, for the expenditure of seven hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-eight cents for work that has taken place. On the air filling, filling station to utilize two oh five, three, three, six, eight, zero, one professional and contractual services. Is there a motion to that?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by uh, trustee cool, support by trustee laughing. Further discussion? Uh, we'll call this.
Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yeah.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, second part i- in the same um. Arena, if you will, in terms of air filling station is an annual compressor service and testing three-year contract. Um.
From seven fifty to sixteen hundred?
No, we, we, we worked, we looked up past invoices and you have the yearly maintenance. Which is higher than seven fifty, then there's three quarterly bills too. That they come in, I'm not really sure, Mark was here, he'd probably be able to tell you exactly what they do on the quarterly. Do you guys know?
Uh, sorry.
Well, we.
No.
On this.
Yeah. The monthly. Well, we just service, maybe it is. I mean, there's probably oils that.
They do it annual.
Air quality.
And then they do quarterly.
Some of the we, some of the ones we have are mandated to have a annual and then a quarterly.
Right, and the quarterly test is anywhere between two hundred and sixty-five and three hundred and seventy-five.
This is.
Trustee Paul.
I think we went through an issue a few years back where that hadn't been done.
Yeah, and it was surely after twenty sixteen when we realized that it had been uh, over five years since anybody. Even had it scheduled to be there.
No.
So are, these are related then?
So one is a payment that has already taken place and then the second part of that.
To do that.
A contract for three-year of service.
Think it should be.
So which, which conversation are we gonna actually have? Because we got a few different ones going. So, um, Miss Ellery Summers, which.
Well, the seven. It is included in the contract.
The seven fifty fifty eight is included in that. So.
So they do.
Yeah, this is for three years. This is the cost.
One a year and then three quarters.
Then.
So this.
Of this, divide this by three, that's the annual, then it's also billed. Three quarterly installments.
But it's, does that start in twenty-four?
This has already started.
No, the, the three-year deal.
I think it's already started.
I think it's already. We've entered into this. Now we just have to approve payment on the next three years. At four thousand eight sixty-four twenty-three. So is there a motion to move, this is, this is a must, the asset.
I'll make a motion that we approve the.
I'll support it.
Annual compressor service testing for a three-year contract.
Okay, and we have a motion and support for their discussion. Seeing none, uh, all those, oh, sorry, roll call please.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner. Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palovich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Yeah, moving on to public comments. Uh, this is the second opportunity for public comment. If there is any public comment online, uh, please use the bottom cat bar to click on the ellipsis and either raise your hand or shoot a message. So that we can identify you and your comment. Again, this is the last opportunity for public comment. Seeing no public comment uh, online. If you'd like, sir.
Come get her. Three ninety south lawn, Eltina, Michigan. I um, I find it um, interesting that um. The Elpina Township Board refuses to address the recent conversation that you guys had about. Getting together amongst you and then getting together with the fire department. It's quite obvious to me that. There's either. Uh, no support for the fire department or there's no long-range plan to support the fire department the way it's put together right now. So there is always been an option to. Have a volunteer fire department with maybe a part-paid chief. For pennies. But nobody wants to go there. Nobody wants to talk about that. I mean, you all have given yourself recent raises, so money is not that tight. In addition to that, it's even more obvious that. The township itself needs some type of a fiscal infusion. And that, that is your responsibility to. Not continue to get by year after year after year, but address the fact that. Only. You can't operate a hundred and twenty square miles on one, one mil operation. Of course, in addition to what it takes to operate the fire department. So there's. I mean, the, there was just a question brought up about the SCBA testing. That stuff comes from your dependence on your subject matter expert, which is your fire chief. Obviously, there's. Little or no confidence. I mean, a lot of this stuff could be addressed before. Um, in small groups, whatever's uh. Um, available under the Open Meetings Act. And uh, get some of this stuff hammered out and get a plan to move, move ahead. And uh hit some of this stuff hammered out and get a plan to move, move ahead. If you can't, it's one thing to not develop a plan. It's another thing to just go, oh, we can't do it. If you know you can't can't do it because you don't have the money, that's one thing, but have a plan. Then everybody knows what to work for. If you wanna. Take care of roads. What's your plan to take care of roads? What's your plan? What's your five-year, ten-year, twenty-year plan? It's only gonna benefit yourselves and it's gonna benefit the visitors and the residents of Elpina Township. But you just gotta go there. It's a, those are the hard decisions. What, what level of service do you want the fire department to provide? Because there's a really cheap option. But we've done. Pretty well over the years. Yes, there's always gonna be a time where there's tough money decisions and you take care of those one at a time. But if you have a. Plan, then you can try to go for that one. Thank you.
A shorter. Hi, y'all. You know me, I'm Beverly Banks. Um, first of all, I'd like to say happy EMS week to everyone and your department. I appreciate that. The other thing, um, a couple of questions. I would like some clarification on something regarding the twenty twenty that you've placed on the asset disposal list. It's also my understanding, that doesn't mean it's automatically sold. It's on a list for disposal. Is that correct?
This is public comment, so.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. You reached out to me earlier today. So I mean, it is, uh, sorry, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go one way, we need to go one way. I'm, okay. The other thing that I would ask for clarification on. And that you please pay attention to the fact that there was a lot of time and donated items that are on that. I would like to know, are you gonna strip that back down to base at what we bought it for? Who is gonna incur the cost of the removal of all of those items? Cause I'm pretty sure a lot of people who donated to put it on there probably is not going to support this and say, I will donate my time to remove those items. Um, the other questions would be the committee that you were talking about and Skibby, if I got the quote, what you said earlier. You were already halfway there with members for it. Are there other board members that are soliciting individuals for that committee, or is it going to be a potentially? For lack of any better word right now, a stacked committee. The other thing too, um, Skibby, you also said number eleven. You referred to cash as number eleven. We don't have that as public. It's on a piece of paper in front of the board member, so we don't have what that knowledge, what number eleven actually means. And uh. As for taking things out of context, which you in this exact board meeting said, let's not take things out of context. To that meeting that you referred to that I attended. May have you have just yourself taken some things out of context. So please, if that's what we need to live by across the board, that's what we need to live by. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
So.
Pick it up a little bit.
Uh, my name's Jake Ordway, just to go back on record again. Uh, I live at thirty eighty-four Long Rapids Road. Um, I just wanna talk about the process of moving forwards. Towards a brighter future with our fire department. Um. Back when I left, obviously due to medical issues with my uh significant other. Uh, when I came back, I didn't have much hope except for the fire chief that called me and said, we need your bag. And uh, I have to say on record that I have seen more stuff come out of him. By completing projects and stuff than I have ever seen out of the seven years that I've worked here. Which is pretty significant, but uh. As far as the trucks go, um, the, was that a twenty twenty rescue? Um, I think he's more seeing it from an operational standpoint. Let's say if one of the rescue trucks were to. Be completely disabled. We have another backup that's similar in nature than an eighteen-year-old trailblazer. And we got people that aren't full-timers here that uh obviously I call staff that come and pick that up if needed. Uh, so as far as a fleet of that's commonly known between everyone, that makes our daily operations better. Um, just recently, we had three or four of you guys graduate fire school. Three, so. The thing I wanna bring up is I had, I know some of you guys couldn't make it, but I had multiple public. Individuals ask me where our board members are at as far as supporting our new graduates. Now, if I didn't see you, that's my bad, but I had to explain this or try and explain this to people. Um. And I didn't really have an answer for them, so I hope that you guys at least extend, uh, you know. Talk to them privately after the fact to congratulate them. And I don't know if you guys have done your getting ceremony yet or not.
For here or will?
For here. Okay, so I just want you guys to understand that you guys have a public image, obviously as public officials. But it doesn't look good if we don't have a representative there for us as a group. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ordway. Uh. Any other discussion amongst the board? Could we go to the order?
Happy EMS week.
So with no other discussion.
I I hear you. So thanks, I'm sorry. Um, I noticed in the road commission minutes that there was a question that involved our township. Involving developing a standard for utility repair excavations. I don't know what that was referencing, but is that something that?
Point of clarification, uh, yes, I attended their meeting. Uh, we've uh. I think we found common ground of a standard. Uh, there were no proper um. Policies in regards to their construction techniques. And so I addressed their board as to what is the policy and what is the standardization. Um, and so, yes, I think that we came to a mutually agreeable position. Uh, of what is expected when we're working within or on Elpina County uh road commissions. Roads are right away.
With all that meant, but okay.
So they they have an impetus of uh a a one-to-one ratio falling away from the gradient of the road. And so if you follow that gradient, you could follow it exponentially out and say anything all the way up to the home. Would fall in that parameter. And so we've tried to find a common sense approach of. Where do you actually need to have? So our principal reason I took that to their board was. That when we have to, are, were in the right way, were then they're obligated to density testing. Of what Sharon Engineer does, the density testing and reports and additional cost. To an already inflated market in terms of excavating. So it's, do we always need to do density? And we've done densities in people's front yards and on the backsides of ditches. So I I presented the argument of what is a logical way of looking at it moving forward. Cause even with doing density, if it's in the road, you will never have perfect bridging. And by bridging, you'll always have sand. I can drive through our infrastructure and be like, yep, had a water dig here. Because as even following their construction standards, you could never attain a perfect fix.
Is that what happened at an Haring Row too, that boat density too?
Well, that's that's outside of our jurisdiction and that's for them to figure out a solution to.
Oh, I just.
It's 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 an engineering.
We haven't driven over it.
It's unique.
It's bad.
Yeah, so that, you know, I look at the reports. I wondered, I saw, and and this is kind of a flag for me. Uh, in in the chief's report, she said something about a FOIA request. Was that to us?
When I get a FOIA request, a lot of the ones that are asking for information on a parcel. They are asking for any reports from the fire department, building permits. So I actually send a FOIA request out to. Supervisor for zoning information, building department for permits, assessor.
So he didn't prepare a FOIA request. He responded to.
He responded to his part of a FOIA request that I have to put all together.
Okay. And what's what's a mineral tech training? What's mineral training?
No, mineral training is like customer service.
It's to the HR portal.
Through the HR portal that.
Yeah, okay. So if there's, are there any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion on by trustee Polly. Uh, Laura, would you like to support that motion? It's been moved and supported to move forward with adjournment. Uh, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. I oppose the same, meeting adjourned at eight twenty-seven.